I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, we come today to honor you and to remind ourselves of your pivotal place on our lives. We ask you for your blessings on this meeting. We ask that your wisdom would guide us as we seek to accomplish our goals. Thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve you and to serve others. May our actions and our attitudes please you this day. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
All right, first order of business, opening and reading of bids. Countywide Bridge Inspection Inventory Program in accordance with National Bridge Inspection Standards for cycle years 2020, 2022. Description number one five nine three zero five six.
Good morning, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the 11th and 4th floors of this building. Good morning, we have received proposals from American Structure Point Inc. from Indianapolis, Indiana, DLZ in South Bend, Indiana, Jansen and Johnson from Indianapolis, Indiana, and Lockner Group from South Bend, Indiana. Is there anyone who submitted a proposal whose name was not allowed? Seeing none, we request that you accept these proposals and bring them over to our department for review and evaluation.
Any questions or comments? And if not, is there a motion?
So moved to do that?
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next item, Edison Road at Birch Road intersection, four-way flasher installation and four-way conversion project. I've been asked by Public Works to extend the deadline for this until 10:00 a.m. Tuesday, September 24th. Once again, the deadline is extended by a week until 10:00 a.m. Tuesday, September 24th. Counselor, do we need to take formal action on this?
I would have a motion to ratify or to approve the extension being requested by the department.
That motion exists.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Moving on to reports and requests, Board of Commissioners, the accounts payable docket, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, Employee of the Month, Commissioner Fleming.
Employee of the month, we're so happy to say, is Susan Lorita. And Susan does an outstanding job in the office, but also out of the office. Susan goes to the VA clinic and does outreach programs for women when needed. Susan also goes to the assisted living places during the week after work when paperwork needs to be signed and the veteran cannot make it into the office. So she goes to help them, which is good. With Susan's help, we did over 10 million for veterans in eight months. So that's fabulous. So, letter have come up and we are going to present here. Very good. Thank you. Did I pronounce your last name yet? Okay, good. And here's, there's your.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you know it?
Yeah.
He's got to sign this. Can you sign that please? I'm sorry. And then here are these wonderful things in there for you.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you for all the work you do. We appreciate it so much.
Love it.
Well, we thank you.
Congratulations. I thank you for all you do.
And then if you want to get a picture with us or something afterwards, just, or should we do it now?
We've been doing it afterwards.
Right, okay, whatever you want, okay.
Would you like to say a couple of words or?
Somebody would like to say?
If you'd like, or Kevin, you want to say a couple of words on?
Yeah.
As well?
One thing that happened five or hour after that letter is Sue got involved with a veteran that was having a heart problem and he was having trouble getting surgery. Sue got involved and in three weeks, he was scheduled for heart surgery. So that was a big accomplishment on her part. When you have a veteran that's in dire need, she stepped in and he got the work done. He had his heart surgery done in Hawaii and he's doing great. So I just wanted to say that. Our department could not, there's only two of us, and in 20 days, we saw 557 people.
Oh my God.
In 20 days. So without her, I couldn't do it.
Wow, you stay a little busy.
Kevin, just.
Thank you so much.
I think every year we get a report that of the 92 counties, you're always number one or number two.
Number two.
In getting funds back for our veterans, over $10 million a year, which not only aids the people that need the money, it also helps our whole economy.
Right.
Because that's 10 more million dollars being spent here, but it's really by veterans who really need and deserve the money. And, you know, other counties with half as many veterans in them might have five or six staff members, you know, and you finally have two, you know, they might have six take home cars in another county, but, you know, so what little you have, you're like, so many other counties departments are doing so much, and it's just a miracle. And I don't know if you have anything to do with the wall that's coming Thursday?
Yes.
You want to talk about that briefly for those who aren't aware?
The San Joe Cemetery, it's going to be there for about four days, and it is the Vietnam War wall with all the names on it.
Last time it was here was '96, is it?
I'm not sure.
Long time ago.
Yeah, it was a while ago.
Quite a while ago. But I've been there about the last 15 years.
Yeah, so it's been pretty, it's a pretty awesome sight to see if you've never seen it. I've seen it, so I'll look forward to seeing it again. Thank you, Kevin, and thank you, Susan, again.
And again, I thank you so much for helping our veterans. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the Airport Authority Board, we have an appointment to make. I will now open nominations.
I recommend a nomination for Jay Azdell.
A second.
Motion to second. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close nominations. All those in favor of reappointing Jay Azdell to the Airport Authority Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have an appointment to the Hotel Motel Tax Board. I will now open nominations.
I would like to nominate John Anthony.
Second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close nominations. Those in favor of reappointing John Anthony to the Hotel Motel Tax Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have a memorandum of understanding regarding the South Shore Line. Counselor.
Yes, Mr. Costelli, thank you this morning to present, appreciate the opportunity to present this item. So in relation to the ongoing South Shore double tracking project, there's been some developments. I think last week, everybody's been where the county council adopted a resolution that would authorize the county to issue what would be half of the amount of the double tracking, which is in the principal amount of 18.25 million. That was ratified and acknowledged this morning by the Redevelopment Commission. What is before you for consideration today is a memorandum of understanding between the county and the city of South Bend and the city of South Bend Redevelopment Commission regarding this project. In the most simplest of terms, the city and the county would agree to share equally in the matching or the total contribution amount of 18.25 million. So the city is agreeing to have a matching amount of $9.125 million that they will provide towards this project. That's as simple and straightforward. I will tell you from the agreement that was tendered to you last week, there are two minor changes. One is that the agreement, the request of the city will be executed by its controller and its Redevelopment Commission, and that in the paragraph two regarding responsibility, because the city has not yet adopted their bond resolution, as opposed to the county that has adopted their bond resolution, the word use, the city agrees to use bonds, has been changed to the city agrees to pursue bonds, which is, just gives the agreement a more true sense to where we're at in the project now, but it doesn't change anything regarding the city's obligation to pursue this. I will also advise the commissioners, because I thought I might get this question this morning, what if the city doesn't do what they say they're going to do? And the option at that point in time is to have the Redevelopment Commission convene, and in any moment in time before the issuance of the bonds, the Redevelopment Commission can take action not to proceed with the bond closing. So that is a fail safe, that the county has if, or some unforeseen circumstance would develop, that we can decide not to proceed with the issuance of it. But I think this agreement has been mutually negotiated between my office and the city attorney's office, and it's for your consideration this morning.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Thomas.
I've certainly spoken many times on what I believe is a folly of this program, because I won't reiterate a lot of things I've already mentioned in the past, but I will mention some new things that come out. Not only is this, you know, absurd waste of money, but it's absurd, appears to be an absurd way of paying for it, using New Carilei TIF money to pay for double tracking in some other county. You know, we've seen in the news recently where there's disputes on how to fund 911, possibly take money from the libraries, townships, the airport, there's questions of, you know, why wasn't South Bend school kids being fed? There's all these needs in the county and other branches of government, and to take our TIF money and not even spend it in the TIF, but say it's going to pay bonds for this project is just really, really foolish. And no offense, Counselor, to share equally, and I may be wrong, but when I read the new contract, which relates with the old contract, yes, it is kind of nice that we're going from a known $18 million debt approximately to a known $9 million debt, but there's also potential unknown debt regarding the whole issue of the South Bend station and what are our liabilities. So now we don't know what those debts are. But back to the issue of sharing equally, if, as I read the contract, this, the new memorandum of understanding, it appears that if things do not go through, that the county's on the hook for everything and would even reimburse South Bend for their expenses. And so that's definitely not equal in my definition of what you're doing, sharing equally. I could probably go, I've got a lot of red ink here, I could probably go through everything and go through it at great length, but I will just point out a few other items, but I'm not going to, but I will put out other items. One is where, at the bottom of the first page where it says, you know, whereas the state of Indiana is mandated, I think mandated is maybe political spin. You know, the county has offered this money, so I don't consider that it was a mandate by state law that we had to pay these funds. And I will note at the bottom of page two, this is probably my most significant question for you, Counselor, that probably needs an answer. The bottom of page two, the last sentence is further, "In the event that the double tracking project contemplated herein has not moved forward with federal funding and the county receives funds, blah, 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 blah." So I think it's, I think from what I've read in the media, and I could be wrong, there currently is going to be no federal funding. The state is taking over all the funding with the counties, and the state has actually redesigned the board of directors of NICTI to, they say, control their massive investment they're going to make to replace the lack of federal funding. So is there no federal funding, is not federal funding, this contract refers to federal funding, and then that brings up the whole issue again. If this doesn't happen because of federal, no federal funding, then are we somehow reimbursing South Bend for something?
I'm happy to address those questions. Let me work backwards. So you mentioned mandated, so there's a statutory enactment by the state of Indiana that says in the event that this county would not provide the 18.25 million, the state could intercept that? And we don't really know what that looks like. I've had many conversations with Mr. Pacenda, who's here this morning. It doesn't really lay out how the state would intercept the county's money, but that is what would happen. So is it mandated? Yeah, they're going to take it, so I think that's a mandate, so.
But there was no mechanism describing how they're going to take money.
That's right. It just says they're going to take it. So I could see that the worst case scenario, they take county seed or general fund dollars, and it could create a dire situation here for budgeting on an ongoing basis. So I think this action, and I'm not speaking on the political prudence of it, but it seems to make sense. The payback language, I appreciate you pointing that out. So how that would work is where the parties are going to jointly contribute $18 million, just to use a round number. Should the, the initial money is going to be used for design, engineering, some other tasks associated with the project on the front end. If there is $12 million of that expended, and that would leave $6 million left, the county would receive a refund of $6 million, and the county is agreeing that the city would get the first amounts of the refund up until their contribution amount of $9 million. So in that scenario, the city would get $6 million back. If only a million dollars is expended, the county would get all of its money back except for the million. So the city would get their nine, then we would get our eight. However, from conversations with representatives of NICTI and from IFA, it is their belief that the monies that would be contributed by the four corridor counties would be spent, I should say, there's enough work to spend all, if not almost all, the money right away. So the refund issue may really be a non-issue. And secondly, I think it's important to point out, as NICTI has worked through this project, it's had an outside rating agency evaluate the project, and it's received very favorable ratings. There was a comparable, somewhat comparable, a much larger project that was performed in the Westlake area by NICTI two years ago. Our ratings by this outside agency are at or near or exceed the favorability of those. So it looks like, from everything that's lining up, that this is, will be a favorable project, and plus, if there is, there probably will not be substantial payback. I think Mr. Costelli said some comments that were.
And I can also speak from a NICTI configuration in state and federal funding. So the plan is, an application is made to the federal government back in the, I think in July, and that process is still being worked through. We intend to, we expect to get an initial rating from the feds by the end of this calendar year. The reason why the state stepped in and increased their amount of contribution to this was because the federal government has, since this was originally proposed at a 50-50 split, they have now gone down to closer to a 38% share of the federal funding for projects such as this. So the state, seeing that and knew there was going to be a potential shortfall, they took the, the almost unprecedented action of dedicating the gap of those funds, both in increased construction costs because of delay in time, and also the expected loss of federal revenue, they were going to fill that shortfall. So that was the action that the state took at that. So there's still plans on federal project, and in the event that this project does not move forward, we will know at least by the end of this calendar year, if we get a thumbs up or a thumbs down, then we move forward from that point forward.
So really, the state's action, the way I understand it, in investing more money in it, and there's that whole board thing, and I'm not addressing that, I'm sure guys is decision, but it, I think the intent of it was, was to make the project much more favorable to the federal government so they wouldn't invest money. Is that right, Commissioner?
That is correct.
Well, the change of the board had nothing to do with us.
I agree. I'm not leaning to that.
And that went from, what, two representatives per county to, that were elected by county officials, in theory, but to people selected by the governor and picked by the governor?
Well, they also have to be elected officials. So there's, there's still elected officials, but they're appointed by the governor versus appointed by position.
And Counselor, sometimes people, you know, there's always a will, there's a way regarding anything that includes TIF money. When people want to sequester TIF money, not spend it, they say, well, we can't spend it outside the TIF. But when they want to spend it outside the TIF, they say, oh, we can spend it outside the TIF in this case. Now here we're going to take, it appears to be a plan, take TIF money and spend it two counties away.
We've had conversations with our bond counsel, Mr. Pacenda, who's here this morning, myself and Mr. Shaloe, about those issues. Because the project supports activity within the district, it was Mr. Pacenda's firm's opinion that we are perfectly fine expending the TIF revenue for that purpose, it's perfectly statutory compliant.
Well, I certainly respect Mr. Pacenda's opinion and yours.
But it was a good question, and one that Mr. Shaloe and I had addressed by bond counsel.
And I could talk for hours, but I won't. I made my common points made at other meetings, and I think it was waiting. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this memorandum of understanding regarding the South Shore Line.
Second. We have a motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed two to one. Just very briefly comment, this has been a very long process, I appreciate Jamie Woods' efforts in working with South Bend. This is a better position than we were initially proposed. We're, instead of coming up with 18.25 million, we're a little over nine. And I think this continues the partnership that you have with the city of South Bend. This was always a partnership when it came to funding the new South Shore. To Mr. Thomas's point about the new train station, that is a conversation that we need to have, but this agreement does not commit us to anything. If we do not mutually agree on a station location, the county is not committed to spending a penny on the new station. So we're still in, we're hoping this can be part of even a possibly a larger project, but, so those conversations will continue. I think it's important that the county has taken the necessary steps in funding this, and this is a truly transformational project for the economy of not just Northwest Indiana, but the entire state, so. All right.
Clarification, I think Director says, it definitely is not a partnership, and it's not a joint venture, or clarification.
Okay. Moving on to bills passed by the St. Joseph County Council. At a public hearing held on September 10th, 2019, we had bill number 8119, salary amendment for the clerk, became ordinance 6919. Bill 8219 became ordinance 7019, salary amendment for the health department, bill 8319, ordinance 7119, salary amendment for juvenile probate court, bill 8019, ordinance 7219, which is the monthly transfer and appropriations, bill 7019 became ordinance 7319, issuance of bonds for the airport authority, which once again have no impact on the county, bill 5219, ordinance 7519, which is a code book amendment by area plan, bill 7219, ordinance 7619, another code book amendment for area plan commission, and bill 7319, ordinance 7719, another change in the code book for the area plan commission. Are there any questions or comments regarding any of these items? Mr. Thomas.
I've got no complaint. If we do, it's in one vote.
That's fine.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to pass all these ordinances, or bills passed, now it's now the county council ordinances. Do I need to say all of them, or you just already said?
Just eight of them.
Yeah, just eight of them. Okay.
Second.
We have motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, Adult Probation, request approval to apply for partnership for education and prevention of substance abuse grant. Mr. Carlton.
Good morning, Justice Carlton, Chief probation officer with the Adult Probation Department, office located here on the fourth floor of the county building. The Adult Probation Department, specifically comes home and requests permission to apply for a grant for partnership for education and prevention of substance abuse. We've received this grant in the past. We utilize this grant for incentive drug screening, plus pass the black scholarships and increase the rate of people who are participating in our program.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve and going for this grant?
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Jesse. Next, Health Department, request approval of resolution R9C2019, immunization fee changes. Good doctor.
Our tax, for the work and health, they implement for this building. This is an request to add two vaccines to our stock, one for singles and the other two vaccine, and then to adjust the current prices for a small number of vaccines to cover our costs from the manufacturer and our administration, or at least keep these increases as possible to facilitate access to vaccines for.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve this resolution R-9-C-2019 for the immunization fee changes.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Well, I'll say the Health Department for always trying to find that balance of being able to bring in the appropriate amount of income, but also keeping the immunizations and the services affordable for the people then.
On the top of your letterhead, you've got Dr. Kalu, Dr. Dierdorf yourself, and Heidi's, Dr. Heidi there. Is that four members? Are they all on the board?
No, Dr. Dierdorf and Dr. Bader are board members, so they're the president, vice president of the board. Dr. Kalu and I, the health officer, deputy health officer, are not members of, I guess.
I was wondering why some were on the letterhead and some weren't. Is your board fully staffed?
It is not fully staffed.
Good, dear, thank you.
All right, moving on to Human Resources, request approval of biometric screen open enrollment 2020.
Kim Parkland, Human Resources Director, St. Joseph County, 74th floor of this building. We are working on open enrollment for 2020, which we bring in front of you the contract for our biometric screen. These are wellness screens that we do every year during open enrollment. In the past years, onsite has been a very good job for us, and getting this done, there's a participation that we have with our employees, and there's houses that are on the medical insurance. We are testing the contract, and we are doing it a little differently this year, but not really the bigger hope, but a major feature, which will actually give more information. Instead of getting a little card that only has nine things listed, they're going to have 26 things listed, and the information that's going to be mailed to them, they give them detailed information on there. With that, they have worked very hard to reconsiderate of our budget and has only increased that $5 to be able to do the 26 tests. So I am asking for us to move forward with this for our 2020.
So I just appreciate you kind of pushing this, because one of the things we try to focus on from an employee standpoint is how do we provide the best healthcare, and then especially from a preventative standpoint, I think with between this, the establishment of the clinic, all these things, we've really taken to focus on how do we keep our employees healthy and moving forward. So thank you for that. Any questions or comments? Thomas.
And to add on to what Mr. Costelli said, I think I can speak for all the commissioners. Again, thank you for doing that, proposing this, expanding what we're going to be testing for, so we could catch more problems with people, to keep them healthier, and at a good price, and certainly we're going to have to make sure that the staff knows that with the more testing requires more on their part, that it's an eight to 12 hour fast, and that they should drink, but that does mean drink plenty of water.
Yes.
And the more water they drink, the better. Because sometimes people get confused, does that include water, does it include milk? What about coffee? Because coffee's a lot of water, but coffee would be a no-no, right?
Coffee is a no until after it's done.
Clean water like comes out of New Carilei, that's all they should.
It's very important for them to be hydrated, for them to actually be able to be hooked up so that they can actually get it without having to have an issue.
And any lit, an advertisement, please feel free, from my point of view, to push the water. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Again, I just want to agree, I think it's great that we're going to be moving forward to help our employees and members of the, you know, insurance, health insurance, so good, as always, good.
There are no more comments. Is there a motion?
Yes, a motion to approve this biometric screen open enrollment in 2020.
Contract, second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Kim. Next, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, request approval of contract with Jennifer Hemthorne.
Morning again, Frank Potia, Department of Architecture, Planning and Growth, offices on the 11th and 4th floors of this building.
And Mr. Shaloe with offices on the fourth floor with the Department of Construction and planning.
So the board today is a contract for part-time services. We, we urged the department earlier this year, we have four different file systems for different ways of organizing a book electronically and on paper, and as we continue to move forward, increasing the more centralized system of files, a lot of this work for the area pipeline is done by Jennifer Hemthorne, so she's very familiar with those file systems and how it's significantly. it's significant portion of our merged department function, and we are looking to use our expertise in that to continue to do that for the main file management.
Questions or comments?
Counselor, your contract?
Which one are we talking about, sir?
The employment one, Jennifer Orkin.
No, I have not. I did not look at that one.
The exact same language that was used in the contract that he approved, when we had Tony Molnar and Lary earlier this year, doing service job was the name and the...
Didn't she already have a contract to do this, and this is just no extension, or...
She was, I believe, given a contract in two thousand and sixteen to do this work for area plan. She was then hired as an employee, but her work schedule available indicates that she can't work full-time, and there are not part-time positions available. This accommodates her schedule, what that means for her.
It's an hourly employment agreement, actually done in the past for departments when they have specialized needs.
Thank you, counselor.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the contract with Jennifer Hemthorn.
Second.
We have motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval of indoc contract R-three-seven-four-eight-zero McKinley Highway from Ash Road to Corwin Street intersection improvement with signals.
If this is just a approval to the board that doing final acceptance of the work on McKinley Highway from Ash Road to Corwin Street intersection.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this indoc contract R-three-seven-four-eight-zero for McKinley Highway from Ash Road to Corwin Street for the final acceptance of the project.
Second.
We have motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval of bridge number sixty-two over Yellow Bank Creek Bridge replacement on Walnut Road, description number one, three-eight-three-three-nine-eight, consultant selection award, construction inspection services.
Proposal for red alert accepted at your meeting on August twenty-seventh at McKinley Highway. We recommend that the board approves the proposal from DLZ as being the most responsible qualified.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve DLZ Indiana for the bridge replacement, construction and inspection services.
Second.
We have motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We have an add-on now, request approval indemnity and consent to encroaching agreement at five-six-eight-five-nine Hollywood Boulevard.
Yes, in this particular case, the property and questions of, since I was trying to defy this property, they, I believe they are a lien, and it's a section that the existing driveway is in the vapor right of way that we have, and we have done this in the past where we just grant the infringement so that the owner can have an infringement into the right of way so that...
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this indemnity consent encroachment agreement at Holiday Boulevard, or Hollywood Boulevard, not Holiday.
We have motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Frank. Moving into old business, seeing then, before public comments, want to give a brief update. There was a question at the Redevelopment Commission meeting this morning for an update on Timothy Road. I can say that the, we have applied for a permit from IDAM, which was initially rejected, so we had to reapply for the permit for IDAM. That work is currently out to bid. We still yet to receive the permit, upon receipt of the permit, and a quote coming back, the work shall be done. It is still on track to be done by the end of October. The other issue is there's an adjacent property owner who is, say, less than thrilled that the work is being done because they anticipate there being potential impacts, further impacts on their property. So, that's an update from Jessica Clark and Public Works. Public comments? Are there any public comments? Seeing none? You have three minutes to address the board. Please state your name and address for the record.
Daily, two seventeen West Michigan Street in Carlisle. I was going to potentially pull this one, the Redevelopment Commission, and it seemed as well just for three projects, the I-C and the road bridge work, the freight center, the I-C promo, that's the idea. It looked like we approved, assuming I'll say we, since we're potentially protected, it looked like about well over quarter of a million dollars. You seem to do that like it's fallen off the log. While we're spending all that money and moving forward, we on New Carilei will still be set barely in the dark despite meetings being characterized as enlightening. They are less. So, I wanted to, again, request that we slow down spending, and we enlighten the people of New Carilei as to what's going on, rather than trying to keep things as stealthy as they're done to now. So, that's all I got.
Thank you.
And I think anything that the Redevelopment Commission has approved definitely comes before this board. Counselor, is that correct?
Some items do, and some items don't.
Before the actual expenditures.
Any other public comments? Seeing none? Motion to recess is in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Tough luck. We are recessed.
To think. He was so good at seeing...